I went up to him and said.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. We're here for our weekly Marion County Board of Commissioners Board Session. It's Wednesday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. It's nine o'clock and we are in the Senator Hearing Room. As always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We don't have anybody signed up for public comment this morning, so we're going to start off with a coronavirus update from our Health and Human Services Director, Ryan Matthews.
Hi, good morning. Yeah, Ryan Matthews, Interim Administrator for Health and Human Services. I wanted to share our COVID- nineteen information as of today at eight AM. Marion County has one thousand nine hundred and eighty-four total cases, one thousand nine hundred and one positive tests, and twenty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-three negative tests. I did want to reference the difference between the total cases and the number of positive tests, just so people know kind of how those are defined. Total cases includes the number of positive tests plus the number of presumptive cases. And the presumptive case is defined as someone with COVID-like symptoms that can be linked directly to a confirmed positive test. And that gap will kind of change as those presumptive cases get tested. They either become a positive test and move into that category, or, you know, if they if they happen to test negative, they would drop off of our count. So that's why there's a slight difference between the total number of cases we report and the total number of positive tests. I also wanted to mention that we've been tracking information week by week. So the positivity rate on based on the testing that we conducted for the week of July sixth through twelfth was eight point three percent. That is down from the previous week, which was at nine point nine percent. It's also worth noting that the week of July sixth through twelfth, we had a sixty-eight percent increase in our testing capacity. So that was great to see. We had over twenty-eight hundred tests conducted for that week. We had our epidemiological team has identified several cases that are linked to Fourth of July celebrations. So a lot of the we're starting to see those come through. And I think it's an important reminder that despite, you know, being in social gatherings of friends and family and people you know, it's still really important to practice physical distancing, wear your mask where appropriate, and certainly have hand sanitizer and ways for people to wash their hands and maintain their personal hygiene. In addition to those numbers, we also have ninety-eight people currently working within our COVID response in Marion County under the Health and Human Services COVID- nineteen Response Team. That includes forty-one people in our surveillance group. The surveillance group is responsible for the case investigation and for the contact tracing. And I really want to acknowledge the work of that team. They work seven days a week, constant shifts. And, you know, they're really responsible for responding to cases as we receive them within twenty-four hours. That's one of the measures that Oregon Health Authority tracks for individual counties. For the last week, for example, we were at ninety-nine point one percent that we had achieved that metric. The goal for the statewide is at ninety-five percent. That means out of the two hundred and twenty-six cases that they had identified, they had followed up within twenty-four hours on two hundred and twenty-four of them. So I think that's pretty amazing work when you have cases that can come in at really all hours of the day and night. So so I really appreciate the dedication of that team. And despite having, you know, ninety-eight people as part of this response, we're continuing to grow. We're adding resources to maintain to be able to help support and assist schools with their reopening plans. That's part of the responsibility of the local public health authority. So we will continue to see kind of the numbers of people participating in this COVID response grow from our department. And I really want to acknowledge and thank them for all their hard work and dedication to really trying to keep our community healthy and safe, which is one of our top priorities in our department. And I think, yeah, and I think that was really all I had to share there. Were there any specific questions or anything?
Please.
If I could, Ryan, I know you probably haven't you haven't announced it, so I hope I'm not breaking anything. But nine hospitalized today. We're talking before the meeting. Typically, we're seeing one, two. I think I saw four yesterday. When does that get significant? And I've misspoke once or maybe lots of times on the hospital beds available. Would you repeat that number for me?
Oh, geez. I don't have the exact number of hospital beds available. I know it's quite significant. And we've never hit a threshold that's really put that at any kind of risk of jeopardy. I mean, we would be.
I think I used five hundred. Is that?
That seems to.
That's Salem Health. That's the total beds in Salem Health under ordinary conditions, under their emergency.
So then there's Sanyam and Silverton on top of that?
And, yeah, and there's a, you know, a limited number beyond that of like ICU beds and things. So it depends on the severity. But we do have a team that is monitoring hospital capacity on a regular basis. And we and we've not reached a threshold. That's a significant area of concern there. The nine hospitalizations that we're reporting today, that is a concern. I don't have any. We just got this report, so I don't have any data on any of the specifics or what triggered that. I think that it is. It's an unusual amount for us, even when we looked as of yesterday sort of at a prolonged trend. We're still we were seeing a downtrend in overall hospitalizations. And I think we were taking that certainly as a positive sign that despite having some increases in the number of cases, we hadn't really seen an increase in hospitalizations until recently. And so I think now we have to determine, you know, what the source is of that.
Sure, looks like an echo from the holiday. It's timed out about right, doesn't it? And I hope tomorrow isn't worse.
In terms of the cases we've been researching and identifying, there's been a link to those Fourth of July celebrations. So I don't know that I can make the link to the hospitalizations. We'll have to do more research and I'll have to get back to you on that. But I agree, today's number that that is certainly concerning and something worth investigating.
Thank you.
And I also, I just want to make it know we talked about it yesterday. But we know about some of the links to family gatherings in Fourth of July because we've been able to ask that question. As we've all seen, there's there have been mass protests and other large gatherings. We don't know if that has had a link because that hasn't been a question that OHA has wanted asked in the investigation. So I think it's important that that we know that. We the information we know is because we're asking that question. And information we don't know is because we're not asking that question because of OHA's position on that.
And we're also certainly dependent on what people are willing to share. So, you know, when we ask the questions on where people have been, it's up to the, you know, the integrity of the individual that we're talking to also to be forthcoming and share or remember all the different places that they've been to help us, you know, make those connections as well.
Commissioner, you had something?
No, good.
I just got one other comment, just last. I don't know what happened, but I didn't feel good when I got home. So you start thinking, oh, oh, here we go. But then I was also thinking about how many people I could have been close to in the last week or so. That contact tracing could be a huge number each time.
It certainly gets more challenging and as people have resumed somewhat more of a new normal, people going to work, people frequenting restaurants and other, you know, other businesses. It just means that your potential for points of contact has only increased, you know, certainly. And I think that our team, you know, does a diligent job in tracking that down. It's also really, I think, one of the things that Governor Brown mentioned in her press conference recently was how important it is for people to return the calls of those contact tracers and to, you know, be willing to respond to those questions. I think that sometimes there's some difficulty in in reaching, you know, people and having people willing to share and speak with our contact tracers and provide information. It's really helpful for us to be able to fight the disease and to be able to inform people that may be at risk of spreading the disease elsewhere. So I think that that was a good reminder for people as well. Where our team is here to support them, you know, we're here to get them resources. We're here to make sure that they're healthy and safe, and so that's our priority.
Hey, Ryan, I do have a question. You said we have forty-one people in our surveillance group right now. Is that, are we planning on increasing that? Are we done with our hiring? Where are we in the process?
No, it's sort of around the clock hiring. We kind of do it in waves in part because, you know, there's only so many you can onboard and train, you know, realistically with the infrastructure. But we've just made a request for an additional twenty contact tracers that we have sent through the recruitment paperwork for. So we should be seeing a job posting soon on that. So we're kind of in a constant cycle of we do a recruitment, we train and onboard, and then we turn around and continue to hire. Because we know this is we're here for the long haul. We need enough depth and capacity of staffing to be able to meet the need. And so it's going to be something we're going to be doing ongoing.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do. This is not related to COVID, Ryan. You're a lanyard. I'm trying to read.
Some you don't want to know.
You may not be familiar with this. It's a Rose Bowl and it's Oregon Ducks.
But but I see a W on there. Like, if I'm a badger, I'm proud of that or what?
Well, Wisconsin also made it to the Rose Bowl. They weren't as successful as we were, but they made it on the lanyard.
We're going to try to stay relevant here, Commissioner.
I was squinting. I look like because I saw the orange on there and I'm going, does that say like, are you trying to be like bipartisan and wear something that has like ducks and beavers and?
No, no. When it comes to college football, I cannot be bipartisan, so can't do it.
Some things it's best to ignore.
Don't ask the question you don't know the answer to. That's right.
A lesson for us all, yes.
All right. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have our consent agenda and.
Chair Willis, I'd like to make a motion to approve our consent agenda this morning. On it, in it, under the Board of Commissioners, we approve an order delegating authority to Jan Fritz, Chief Administrative Officer, and Jeff White, Chief Financial Officer, to approve amendments to the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Administrative Services for CARES Act reimbursement. Approve the incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Administrative Services for an estimated contract total of nine million eight hundred thousand dollars for reimbursement of expenditures related to COVID- nineteen through the CARES Act from March first, two thousand and twenty, through December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Human Resource, approve a recommendation to adjust upward pay grades for classification five eighty-two, a nutritionist, five eighty-four, nutrition specialist, and uphold the pay grade for five eighty-three, Christian educator. Information Technology, approve amendment number three, the purchase order agreement with Uwork.com Incorporated, DBA Covendis Technologies. Add thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars for a new contract total of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred and eight dollars for temporary staffing services that were provided in the months of May and June, two thousand and twenty. Public Works, approve an order reappointing Gary Monders, Mike Long, and Stanley Birch to the Marion County Planning Commission with terms ending July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. And the last, approve amendment number two, to the incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Hayesville Drive Northeast Portland Fuer Street. Salem Project add one million two hundred and two thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and exactly eighty-four cents for a new contract total of six million one hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars seventy-one cents to supplement increased right away in construction costs through August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-six.
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to our action agenda. And next up, we have Commander Carvandi and Troy Gray. We're going to consider approval of a proclamation designating the week of July nineteenth through twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty as National Parole and Probation Officers Week in Marion County. Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning. How are you?
Great. Welcome.
Tagged this morning and thanks for having us. For the record, Kevin Carvandi, Commander of Community Corrections Division Sheriff's Office. And with me today is Troy Gray, with the Director of the Division of Community Corrections. And bottom line, as my first go around with this, it's an honor to be in this position to share a couple words of support for our folks doing extremely hard and noble work in our community as far as community corrections this week. Marks National Parole and Probation Officer Week, it was created as an awareness about the work officers do for our community. Nationally, we have over four point four million adults on some form of community supervision. And Oregon alone, we have twenty-seven thousand six hundred on supervision. In Marion County, we have approximately thirty-one hundred. Over the years, our division is engaged in a number of evidence-based efforts to provide support services, lower supervision, supervision rates, collaboratively work with our community, and enhance public safety. Just to mention a few examples, we've implemented EPICS, Effective Practices, in community supervision and core correctional practices as our base models of supervision and interaction with whether in the field.
Excuse me, Commander, is your is your microphone working there? You tap on it and just make sure it's on.
Yep, there we are.
Very good.
Just to mention a few examples, we've our drug-endangered children's unit worked tirelessly with partner agencies to keep families united and work towards family reunification. We've also implemented successful flagship justice reimbursement programs. Our Senate Bill four sixteen prison aversion program is being modeled and replicated in several areas throughout the state. SOAR, Student Opportunity for Achieving Results, our prison reentry program, originally implemented in two thousand and ten. We launched a total of thirty-six cohorts and actually our thirty-sixth class was this last Monday. And considering launching that in the middle of a pandemic is is significant and pretty impressive. We've got phenomenal staff doing great work. But just within the last decade with that program alone, we've seen significant reductions in recidivism. At the end of the day, we are we are in the people helping business. And the role of our POs plays a huge role in helping change lives and making significant contributions and improving the outcomes of our clients. They're a critical part of our public safety system in terms of reducing recidivism as well as our prison population and holding clients accountable and protecting the public. Our POs are highly trained in best practices. They spend a considerable amount of time teaching our clients to be better neighbors. And they're genuinely committed to making a difference in our community, all the while keeping our community safe. This week is a time to recognize and honor than implement the work, important work of our community corrections professionals and thanking them for the service and commitment to our Marion County community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commander.
Thank you, Commander Carvandi. And, you know, this is an interesting time. And we've talked about this multiple meetings and situations around this with COVID- nineteen and how that's changed the way that we've done things, particularly over the last three months. As Commander Carvandi mentioned, you know, with us, the Juvenile Department, we have about seventeen hundred referrals a year, which equates out to about eleven hundred different youth that we serve on a yearly basis along with their families. And that is primarily done through all the work that we do. And we celebrate all the Juvenile Department with this particular proclamation that comes out. But this is obviously focused on the probation staff. We have twenty-two probation staff that do a lot of work, hands-on work with with kids. Our goal is to hold the youth accountable because that's the job that we do. It's public safety. It's our responsibility to hold them responsible for the choices that they make. But in that same respect, it's to give them opportunities to change, opportunities to do something different, to learn something different. The young people that we work with, you know, have an opportunity, we really have an opportunity to form positive relationships with those. And, you know, the last four months has been a different world when it comes to working with kids and families. And my probation staff have done an excellent job of modifying, figuring out different ways to reach out and connect with kids. I thank the commissioners for the insight over the last two years to make our staff a lot more mobile so that we can get out and actually make those connections because that's the biggest impact we have is those face-to-face opportunities with kids. But they've done Zoom meetings, you know, they've done texting over the phone. We've created as many different opportunities as we possibly can with them, and they've been dedicated to working with kids. And and I think the thing that I say the most about the probation staff that we have with is that they're dedicated and committed to these kids. You know, we see the situations and circumstances that these kids kids come through that has helped lead them to the poor choices that they made to ultimately get there. And and we work hard and they work so hard to make sure that those kids are put in the right place and have the right resources to ultimately be successful in the future. And so I can't be more proud of my probation staff. This year is a challenging one for us as we've lost. We're on our third probation staff that's been here over thirty years. And we have one probation supervisor that's retiring or just retired of over thirty years as well. So we're losing a lot of history. But but the new staff that are coming onboard are just as passionate about doing this work. And that's that's those are the type of people that you get in doing this job, those that are passionate about making a difference and a change with kids. And so I'm excited to join with the sheriff's office in this one to ask you to accept this proclamation so that we can do a specific job next week of celebrating them and the work that they do.
Question.
Well, I do. Again, thank you for those that aren't in the room that are we're honoring today. And but I'm really going to be disappointed because we're probably not doing a barbecue this year, are we, Kevin?
No, that's that is the unfortunate piece.
That's that's the thing.
Well, I know we really do appreciate everyone, I mean, each of you showing up too. It means it means a lot.
Grab that a little bit closer. There you go.
Sorry about that. Yeah, it means a lot to all of us when you guys can show up and show support. So, yeah, that is, that's definitely a downfall. We had to get creative. And so I think it's, gosh, it's a taco company. We ended up doing a cater. But we had a beautiful, beautiful building in the back, nicely landscaped. And we're going to have some, maybe some with social distancing and gloves, maybe some cornhole and some just some yard games, but.
Oh, you are doing you are doing a little celebration.
Yeah, it's just just with with our with our folks.
Because you don't want commissioners that are contaminated to show up.
That's the problem. You guys are always. You're always more than welcome, but it's a it's a Mexican food is what we are catering to. And so we're going to do something a little bit different this year.
Good.
Yeah, we'll still have a lot of fun and do what we're supposed to to celebrate all the good work they're doing. I do want to.
What about Troy? Troy usually has like.
You guys are invited to ours, so just to let you know. Although, Brentano, you said you weren't seeing her well, so maybe, you know. So we are doing something next Tuesday. We're going to do similar to what we did last year in the Hawaiian barbecue and set it out. Obviously, like I said, with with new restrictions and everything like that, we're being real cautious about how many people are in one area at one time and spread out. But we do have a nice area next to the new building as well that we can do that. But we are we are absolutely going to celebrate this with our staff. And and I, like I said, I know the sheriff's office is doing the same thing. It's just it's just a real creative time for both of us to try to figure out how to do it safely and effectively.
If I could, Troy, when you were talking, I was kind of thinking, things are different, obviously. But when you were explaining the Zoom meetings, the texts, so it's hard to make physical or personal contact with people. And it seems like might not be as effective. And then I was also wondering, has the juvenile court been operating full? Is there getting to be a backlog there or other issues?
So they've been doing initial appearances as kids come through. And any kid that's in detention, they're still doing the ten-day review and stuff. But the actual, you know, trials and everything like that are being pushed out. And they are starting to do a little bit more. We're actually starting to do a little bit more face-to-face in courts. But you're exactly right. It's a it's a different world. There's not a whole lot of referrals that are even necessarily coming out and through. There's a lot of site releases instead of bringing kids into detention that may have historically been there. But it's it's difficult because, again, the the best work that we do, and we know that, is those connections that we have with the kids and ultimately with the families and helping them be successful. And and, you know, kids love to text, so that is the one benefit that we have is that they'll respond to a text sometimes when they won't respond to a phone call. And so we have increased that, but it's not like face-to-face, yeah.
And then what was I just thinking about? Oh, just school being kind of out of session and more idleness. And I know I'd get in trouble, so that must be an issue too.
Yeah, and we have a lot of challenges when it comes to school this fall and about how that looks for the Juvenile Department and what that means for for kids, kids out there and what they're doing, so.
Now, I'm coming to to retirement today. Is it Annette? Was that?
It is, yep. Annette Mancuso has been here.
Is she thirty years?
Thirty-plus, yeah.
Oh, maybe we'll get a story or two. That'd be great.
I'm sure she's got them.
All right.
Mr. Karen, sorry, fuck, we interrupt?
No, that's good. I just I really appreciate this work. And I know we can't do ride-alongs right now or not advisable. But I know some of the times I've been out with with both parole and probation, the juvenile and sex offender unit and all those guys, gals that that work, it's an amazing work that they do. Very special talent. It makes a difference in people's lives. And I think yesterday we had a really good Public Safety Coordinating Council meeting. We were talking about courts. We didn't get into the juvenile court. We were talking about cases here, especially the defense bar. They mentioned that normally they have about seven hundred and now they're at a thousand. But and you heard Judge Proll yesterday talk about Marion County is leading state and how we're working together, obviously. And she said she's on these calls with the other big counties. And it's they all just envy the types of relationships that we have here and the work being done with with within our courts and our parole and probation and everybody working together. But those people just do special, special work. And here's the one thing they were talking about yesterday, you know, whether it's school resource officers or parole and probation officers, how do you measure prevention? It's silence, right? I mean, you cannot measure what we've prevented by the investment that we make in somebody who's on in a program that's that's getting that personal attention or that that youth that's getting that relationship and their life turns. And I think that's something that people need to keep in mind is is how many of us have had a relationship in our life that that turned us a different direction and helped us go a different direction and prevented us from maybe taking the wrong road. So thank you for what you and your people do and really appreciate it.
Well, and I've been thinking actually about how we can. This is a time where I felt like you can kind of have been sort of a family up in the Portland area sort of horrified by what Zena, just what people are suffering, lawlessness. And and I think of people like Josh and Hank and folks who have come through the system here, who have who have, you know, spent time in our jail and in the criminal justice system and have worked with your parole and probation officers. And now they're sort of the biggest advocates for you guys because they were treated with respect and they were they were held accountable, but in a way that didn't demean them. But they'll recognize their humanity. And I just see the strength of those relationships really pull our community together. And I think it's a real reason why we don't have a lot of the problems that they have up north is because of the good work that you guys have done over the years. And I've been thinking a lot about how it's just that little bit extra, you know? Like, you guys have really hard jobs and there are a lot of days where it's like, you could easily just say, look, I'm not getting paid enough to do this extra work. I mean, the the stuff that I have to put up with is just not worth it, you know? And it's that it's that little bit of like, but I'm not doing this just for the money. I'm doing this because I care for my community. I'm doing this because I love the people that I serve and I want to keep my community safe. And and it's just that little bit of extra that sort of pulls people together and inspires some of the folks that are under supervision to maybe think about a different way of life, you know? And and then that has this chain reaction, right, and their associates and the folks that they've maybe lived with and done stuff what they shouldn't have been doing, start thinking differently about life. And then you have this whole community of people who who instead of everybody kind of clinging to, I need to get what's mine now, become how do I give back to this community? How do I make this community a little bit better? And I think we are blessed by by folks that think that way. And I really think that's the difference, you know, and it's not a big difference, just kind of being willing to give that little extra every day, especially when your funding is getting cut by the state or, you know, you know, something terrible is happening. Or I think that's that's the strength of it is it's not done in times of plenty. It's done under stress and in difficult times. It's a testament to your character and the character of your people.
Yeah, seeing people as people goes a long way.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Who's up? Kevin? Commissioner.
All right, so, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve a proclamation designated in the week of July nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, as the National Parole and Probation Officers Week in Marion County.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I'll read the proclamation.
Please.
Before the Board of Commissioners from Marion County, Oregon, in the matter proclaiming the week of July nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, as parole and probation officer week, whereas the Marion County Sheriff's Office parole and probation officers and Marion County Juvenile Department probation officers are an essential part of the Marion County criminal justice system and whereas the parole and probation officers of Marion County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Marion County and whereas the parole and probation officers of Marion County recognize their duties to serve the people of Marion County by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, by supervision and monitoring the activities of adult and juvenile offenders living in Marion County and.
Whereas the parole and probation officers of Marion County are trained professionals who provide services and referrals to our offenders and whereas the parole and probation officers of Marion County work in partnership with community agencies and groups and whereas the parole and probation officers of Marion County promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy and whereas the parole and probation officers of Marion County provide services, support, and protection for victims and whereas the parole and probation officers of Marion County embrace evidence-based practices, utilize effective practices in community supervision and are a true factor for positive change and.
Whereas it is important that all Marion County citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their parole and probation officers. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the commissioners of Marion County, do hereby proclaim July nineteenth through twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, as parole and probation officer week and encourage all citizens to honor the parole and probation officers of Marion County and to recognize their achievement. Witness thereof, we've we have here unto set our hand and cause the seal of the county of Marion be affixed dated this fifteenth day of July, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commander, if you want to come up, I have a.
Commander, if you want to come up, I have a... Okay, next up, we have Kevin Burton and Larry Tilford. We're going to be accepting the final closeout report for various Marion County projects. This is a good day for you fellas, huh?
Good morning, Commissioners. Larry Tilford, Facility Program Manager for the county, and I'm here, it's my privilege to introduce and support Kevin Burton, who's the Facilities Project Coordinator, to close out several projects that he's worked hard on, performed extraordinarily in this last year. We've come in on time or under budget with nearly all of these and wanted to share them with you. I also personally want to thank you for one in particular. There's one that I have advocated for a number of years for, and that is the Horns and Strokes Project for this building. Somehow this building was constructed without those in place. I don't understand the reasons for that, but we are now fully in compliance with all fire codes and, and also we have the benefit now of, of the hearing impaired, being able to be, to be aware when there's a fire alarm or some other alarm going on in this building. And so it's a great thing. We're really grateful for the funding for that. Thank you. Kevin, you want to share your projects?
Yeah, so for the record, Kevin Burton, Construction Project Coordinator for the county. We're going to start off the presentation today with our Juvenile Services Building. So I appreciate the, the board and management staff of the county for support in the renovation or new construction of, of these buildings. Keeps our assets and our programs diligent and maintainable for the future, keeps them energy efficient and those kind of things, so our programs work a lot better. Juvenile Services Building was constructed last year. So we got started November of 2017. This came about because the department had multiple buildings, people in different places, needed court, added court facility, those kind of things. So we started planning in 2016, 2017 on what to do with the juvenile department. In 2017, we added a courtroom to the existing detention facility. And it was looked at remodeling the existing administration building or going with a new building and it just made more sense to go with a new building that fit the department and could give us the energy efficiency return. So we're actually saving somewhere around 30% or $60,000 a year in energy costs on the new building, so our, our return on that investment will be coming back. We had a great partnership with RA Gray Construction in this project. We received some very good bids. If you notice, our project budget over on the left was $9,289,524,000. Our actual budget is still a few pending things, but where we're sitting now is about So we got some really good bids, helped us keep our budget very good. And then we were also able to limit change orders. We had 30, 38 change order requests to have four change orders for only $192,000 for 3.1% of the contract. So a little bit of the construction process, these are the footings being poured, the first of our steel going up. This was a steel column, bloom frame building that allowed us to be able to work through the winter without moisture content issues. So the slab was being poured and this is our structural block for the entryway of the new building. More framing process, the covert pipes for the new entrance drives. If I'm going too fast, just let me know. This is the roof deck and our mechanical well. The center part there is a clear store. You can notice the windows that are there that allows natural light into the center of the building, so we don't have to rely on artificial lighting near as much. This is the vapor barrier and lentils and everything around the windows, so we make sure we have a good weather seal on the building. We put a, a variable refrigerant flow or a VRF HVAC system in here that allows cooling or heating and also breaks the zones down to about four offices. So if we ever lose a heating or cooling system, just one of those fan coil units, we're only affecting four offices, not an entire building. So it, it allows us to ramp up some of the others and still maintain livability. Just ongoing process, the masonry and cladding going on. We call this MEP, Mechanical, Electrical and Plumbing, all visible in this wall. Drywall taping, mechanical ducts up above, our electrical room. Getting closer, the new roadways are in.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, we had a couple of really good snow days out there on the construction site. The masonry cladding is, is rather expensive, so on the clear store, we went with an insulated metal panel up above. This is the new casework for the kitchen going in. And our systems furniture, landscaping, driveway, asphalt pour, the new furniture. This is kind of an interesting story. There were two flowering plums on the site. The alternative programs has their own sawmill, so when we cut down the trees, they took the trees to their mill, they milled the slabs, and then within their wood shop department, they built the wood cabinets and the, the breakfast bar that are at these locations. And this whole breakfast bar was all made out of those plum trees. So we took something from the site, but we incorporated it into the building. I'm pretty happy with that. And they're absolutely beautiful if you haven't seen them yet. And here we are, ready for business. Can I answer any questions on this project?
Nice work. We were all out there for the ribbon cutting and, and then I was just out there last week for another retirement and it's just a really, really comfortable place to be. And I, I think we want to thank you, Kevin and, and Larry for the oversight and having a well-constructed, on-time and budgeted project. And I think this completes, right? I'm sure I think...
I was wondering, Kevin, what...
Other than a bridge in Scotts Mills?
Are you out of work now? We got something else for you. Where are we at?
Yeah. We've had a lot.
We have a list of future projects and...
There's a bridge in Scotts Mills, I think. Well, that's, that's public work, sorry.
Thank you for continuing to budget. We do have a lot of things going on out at our jail. Of course, it's an essential facility for the county, so, yeah, we've got roofs and HVAC and security upgrades and all kinds of fun things happening out there right now. So little job security right now.
Because Kevin keeps the cost down these projects, there's enough money to keep doing more projects. That's, that's the nice thing about not letting these things balloon.
I can't even list the number of projects we've completed and Kevin's been a big part of them. I think the county's in freaking shape.
Well, and you can see other jurisdictions spending so much money on just one of these projects. So credit to you guys that you're able to keep the costs down here. Sometimes I'm astonished at how much money people spend on some of these buildings.
It's, public sector work is quite a bit more expensive than private sector and it's sometimes very eye-opening to see the, the cost difference between the two and all the different pieces that go into one versus the other.
And the variability of it.
And it can be very shocking and it's hard on the taxpayers to have to come up with the extra, you know, monies for, for the public projects.
Yeah, well, and, and it's not, not all the same. I mean, you'll see this building that looks the same as this building, but this one costs 2X, so it's really important work that you get.
Yeah, a lot of its usability, too, what kind of features inside are needed. Public safety building is an example. You know, we had a lot more security involved in there, drove costs up in certain realms. Move on to our next project. The Transition Center, last year, 2017, we did a complete HVAC, heating, ventilation, air conditioning upgrade on this building, created additional air exchanges and a better, we used a VRF system in here as well. And then we also put a new roof on the building, but it left a lot of tenant improvements that were necessary. The Central District Office, the Enforcement Division of our Sheriff's, Sheriff's Department was in the back half of this building and when we completed the new public safety building, they had a new area to move to, so the Dimunia Center took over their old area and it was pretty dated. So we were able to paint, do flooring, exterior elastomeric sealing, we replaced the soffits, we replaced the lighting, we upgraded the casework in the control tower, we replaced some glass in the control tower so that it added more usability to that space. This was a shared project between Terry Stoner, our facility supervisor, our maintenance supervisor, Larry Tilford and myself. We all took different pieces of it to do it and so kudos to the three of us to be able to collaborate and still have this all, all done. We were able to utilize different vendors instead of a single general, which allowed us to control costs a little better. We were able to get better, better bids rather than a markup from a general on all of it. So we had $198,000 budget roughly and we spent about $140,000. And out of all of the work that was done there, we only had $61,000 of change orders. A few things, that's the new exterior elastomeric coating. This is what the soffit and lighting and exterior looked like before and this is what we're like now. So you can see the new metal panel underneath, new lighting and new paint. New flooring, that used to be a nice harvest red color, very dated. This is the old casework that was inside the control tower. Note the old flooring, not matching anything. It's a very tall countertop and the window that's direct center, top of the screen, is where they talk to the adults in custody and it was hard to transfer paperwork back and forth there. So we actually lowered that whole countertop down, created a workstation at each window, so now there's a deputy station to add each window. They can do their computer work and also maintain contact with the adults in custody there through those lower windows. Any questions about that particular project? Hearing none, we'll move on. So within the jail court annex, the VRF system that we had there had some piping, refrigerant piping that didn't last as it was designed. It created little weep holes, so we kept losing refrigerant and we couldn't control the temperatures within that space. So we repiped the entire system with a tried and true copper pipe and we had to do that. We started at 5:00 in the morning, worked till 2:00. We did it while the courts were still operating. Had an initial project budget of $177,348 and we were able to accomplish it for $96,941. Only 5.8% of the contract in change orders and that was requested that we add a bunch of extra valves so that it makes maintenance, long-term maintenance on the system a lot better. The original engineer of record, CBD engineer, David Bachmeyer, had approved a substitution request for that other piping and he had reservations about it from the beginning. And when he found out that the system was failing, he completely did the whole project package for us at no cost to the county because he had remorse about accepting that. So I really want to acknowledge David Bachmeyer and his integrity and following up with that and helping us achieve a lot better product at the end. So not a whole lot to see. We got copper pipes, they all go up in the ceiling. So these are some new pipes installed at a fan coil unit and this is up in our mechanical room where they come up through the ceiling of the courtroom into our mechanical well. Any questions on the repipe job? As Larry mentioned, the courthouse square fire notification, we did not have audible alarms or visual alarms throughout the building. It relied on a telephone call and a paging system throughout the building. So we were able to upgrade the whole system, add notification devices. We have a few in this room here, one right up there. So very much a safety improvement to the building. Original project budget of $200,000, we were able to accomplish it for $186,266. Few change orders. So not a whole lot to show in that project other than some new notification devices, so not many pictures for you, but I definitely want to show my appreciation for support that we have in upgrading our facilities and happy to answer any questions for you.
I think you answered everything I could think of.
Yeah, I just really appreciate, I know this has been a, what, six-year project to get all these things done and appreciate Jan and, and John, Jan and John before he left us, and Jeff and everybody in the finance department to be able to, to get us to this point, you know, it was, it was really important that we upgraded our facilities. And I know Commissioner, you're going to leave knowing that the infrastructure in Marion County is in much, much better shape. You experienced a lot more than I have with the buyer and this building and all that, but much better shape than it was when you got here and, and I know I will always be grateful for that for you and your leadership in those areas, too, and Commissioner Carlson. So thank you for getting us to this point. I'm, I know we have other projects, they're probably not as visible and pretty as some of these buildings that you've built and constructed, but it's great to know the citizens of Marion County, the stewardship that's taken place to get us to this point is really a positive thing, so thank you.
So I'm going to tell a story, probably shouldn't, but just for the record.
That's okay. Remember you said the other day, nobody listens to you.
Yeah, I know. So that'll be great. Everybody can just take a little snooze. But we have a parking structure right behind us here. It's two-story, has a bunch of structures, I shouldn't say structures, has issues anyway. Could be a lot, hold a lot more cars, could be a lot. So it bothered me and I got Commissioner Carlson to agree and we were going to fix it. And then kind of the bill came, it was like six, eight million dollars. Ten?
When I got here, and when I got here, you guys were ready to spend $10 million on that garage.
Well, then you might have straightened me out. I don't know. Forget that part of the story. But anyway, the thought and the discussion went through, now wait a minute, whatever amount of money it is, we can do a lot more important things that really affect how the county operates and provides services. And frankly, the buildings were getting kind of rough, the structures around, so we changed our course. I give Jan and John so much credit, finding ways to finance it, take advantage of low interest rates even then. We accomplished a whole bunch the last, say, six years, I don't even know that, but it started with trying to fix an eyesore and, and turned into a project that I think really upgraded the county, so I am very happy.
Nice work.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that we accept the final closeout report for various Marion County projects as was presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next up, we have Scott Emery and we're going to consider approval of Amendment Number One to the Purchase Order Agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated to add $194,997.75 for a new contract total of $380,709.89 for licenses, maintenance and support for the Marion County Assessor's Office through June 30th, 2021. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Commissioners. Scott Emery, Information Technology Director for the Record. The Marion County Assessor and Tax Office currently uses a proprietary Tyler TSG system to process assessments and taxation. The system retains the data related to ownership, lot size, sales activities, inventory on all improvements to land... lot size, sales activities, inventory on all improvements to land, special assessment information, and other related data. The Assessor's Office uses this system to calculate all taxes, urban renewals, joint values with other counties, and other functions at roll turn that occur the last two weeks in September until the tax roll is certified. We are seeking approval to execute the second and final year of a two-year sole-source agreement for the software maintenance support from Tyler Technologies in the amount of $194,997.75. I do want to note that the TSG application has reached its useful end of life, and the Assessor's Office just completed the first phase of implementation of a new commercial off-the-shelf property assessment and taxation tool. The replacement tax-receiving module is now online as of July 1st, and the first of five implementations that will be fully implemented by July 2021. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Scott, contract?
Well, the previous subject, I was talking about how good we did. But in this case, and the next one, we're going to talk about the jail management software system we've been working on for 10 or 15 years, and they're still not replaced. But we keep heading that direction, and someday it will happen.
It's coming.
All right. I like the sound of that. Soon as I am gone, it'll get here.
Mr. Sheriff, we're ready.
Right.
I'll move approve that, approval of Amendment Number One to the purchase order agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc. to add $194,997.75 for a new contract total of $380,709.89 for the license, maintenance, and support of Marion County Assessor's Office through June 30th, 2021.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Scott. Okay, next up, we're going to consider approval of the contract for services with Executive Information Systems Incorporated in the amount of $1,397,125 for the Sheriff's Office records management and jail management software system through June 30th, 2022. All right, which one of you guys is going to kick this off?
I'll kick it off. Scott Emery again for the Record Information Technology Director, and joining me is Jeff Stettroot, Commander of the Enforcement Division for the Sheriff's Office.
Great. So the Marion County Sheriff's Office seeks to replace the current record and jail management system that captures information related to arrests, completion of reports in the field, as well as a system for tracking inmates and recording data related to jail time, arrests, and personal information. The current lock-and-force, lock-and-track legacy technology is significantly past useful life, having served the county for more than 25 years, and is no longer supported by the vendor. Development of replacing the specifications and the selection of the new system has taken the county more than four years of effort, and through the competitive contracting process, Marion County has selected the system from Executive Information Services, Inc. The licensing, implementation, and support through July 30, 2020 has a contract total of $1,397,000 and $125. Sorry about that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Commander Stettroot.
So I remember, I'll start, good morning. I'll start with talking a little bit of history from the Sheriff's Office side. I remember early in my career here at the office, when we were just actively going to lock and track the current RMS, JMS, and being one of the trainers to go and train people to work on that system. And at the time, we thought this was a great system, going to save us time, because prior to that, we were typing Word documents in all of our reports and that. And, you know, at the jail side of it, it's handwritten logbooks and that kind of thing going on over there still to this day. So, it's been a long time coming, and it's been really nobody's, no fault of anyone, but we're super excited. We're going to look at our process. This gives us an opportunity with this new RMS and JMS system to look at our internal processes, look at some efficiencies, change the way we operate. You know, we're looking at paperless system, routing things, not hard copy printing, we won't be doing that anymore. Hopefully, it'll combine with the new DA system as well, so we can just route the papers over there. You know, and it's, like I said, it's going to be a lot of efficiencies for the agency, as well as saving staff time that we can work on other things. The one, the other big benefit, I think, with this is tracking of data and pulling reports and statistical tracking and things like that. It's going to make it much easier. Right now, we're operating on a whole bunch of different reports that IT has created over the years, and this is going to give us the opportunity to put all of our reports, all of our data in one system, so that we're not having to search multiple different software systems to find the information. So it's going to be a huge improvement. Really looking forward to it. You know, there's been a lot of, a lot of people have put a lot of time and effort, retired under Sheriff Troy Clausen, put a ton of his time into this, Commander Ted Larson, who's on vacation, or he would have been here doing this. He's put a ton of time. It's been a long project, but we're super excited to get this moving and moving forward on it. So.
Fabulous. Thank you, both. And this looks like this is a contract. So we've picked the vendor, we've picked the system, we have a contract, we're going to prove it today, and then we're just implementing. Is that right?
We're off to the races, yes.
That's correct. Okay, so this is a very big day. And it looks like it's a five-year contract. What's the timeline look like? You know, when do you start being able to use this system? What have they promised?
Right, and it is, it's a multiple-phase rollout based on the groups. Overall timeframe is about two years. The reality is, though, within the first 12 months, we'll be actually deploying quite a bit of the functionality. The statement of work actually goes through that scope and the sequencing in which the deployment would take place. So realistically, we start to get a benefit from it from day one. The retirement of the existing system, though, wouldn't be able to happen for another two years. That still puts the county at risk. That system is single-threaded, no vendor support. So we're all very, not only excited, but we also want to push this as fast as we possibly can.
Fabulous. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, just really quick. Commander, you mentioned, hopefully it interacts with the DA's office. We don't want hope here. What's the deal? Is it, or does it? Does it, or yes?
Technically, there's the capability doing it. The DA's project goes live the end of this month. We still have to do the integration. A little bit about which department's going to pick up the cost, but beyond that, it does integrate.
Okay.
And we have another project for the jail as well that we're working on, another IT project, is that right?
We have several. We have the rewiring of the facility itself. We have to completely gut and replace all the wiring, replace all the network equipment, replace all the video surveillance. We have the new radio system going in that's highly dependent on the network, and of course, as you just heard from facilities, the jail door controls. So, it's all jail, all day, 24 hours, it seems like, but it'll be great improvement.
And this, the jail management side of this system will be replacing a ton of their stuff over there for their reports, their classification process, the tracking the inmates throughout the facility. So it'll be a huge improvement over there as well. The other part of it is, it's a seamless, now there's a lot of duplication of work from the patrol side to booking and then lodging them in the jail. This is all, you enter at once, and then you just add to that as it goes through the process.
Great.
And so we have the radio, the doors, and this. Are they all sort of, imagine that they interdepend on each other?
They do, including the surveillance video. We're trying to keep to the straight and narrow, to get the core capability first, but we know that we're going to have to eventually go back through, as we were talking about, an integrated workflow, be able to take video of events that happen at the jail, and be able to immediately link it to the record associated with that particular inmate. So there's significant modernization here, but we have to get to the basic blocking, tackling capability first, and then build on top of that.
So is the idea that we're going to be, over the next two years, all of these programs are kind of going to be progressing together?
Correct. It is a little bit of a logistics challenge with the Sheriff's Department. We're kind of fortunate right now to be able to manage the inmate flow, but is, we have several vendors all in the jail trying to work, you know, simultaneously, and that does, you know, create a lot of logistic work for the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah.
And we're managing through that, you know. The, as you all know, the AIC population in the jail was spread out and moved around because of COVID and precautionary things. It was nice previously when we had the vacant housing unit. So if we wanted to do work in one housing unit, we could move the AICs to another one, close that, let the work be done. We'll just have to manage that. Commander Larson and his team will manage that as well.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Chair Willis, I'd like to make a motion that we do approve the contract for services with Executive Information Systems Incorporated in the amount of $1,397,125 for the Sheriff's Office record management and jail management software system through June 30th, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I was just going to say, we were just done with buildings, but now all the money we're investing in IT is huge, and I think Scott hit it. It's not only this, but the clerk's office and our software. Just, we just got to continue on. So, it's not as visible as a building, but it certainly can help us with productivity in our employees and how we, things that you just talked about, just be more efficient with the same amount of people. So it's a way we have to go. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Commissioner, did you?
Any further discussion?
Did I cut you off?
No, please. Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
All that I was thinking of, they told me when the first computer showed up how easy life would get, and it'd be so simple. Yeah, and I don't recall that happening, and I had to quit about 10 decades, 10 years ago.
There's a great, you have a great story about bringing your counting machine in when you, yeah, anyway. Lonnie, it's been a long time.
It has been.
Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. Let me get this open.
Okay, we're going to consider approval of the public improvement agreement with Emery and Sons Construction Group in the amount of $336,895 for the Silverton Road Campus Stormwater Facility Upgrade Project through September 30th, 2021. Lonnie Radke is here to tell us all about it.
Hi, good morning. Thanks, thanks for having me. Can you hear me okay through my mask?
Absolutely.
Okay. For the record, Lonnie Radke, Marion County Public Works Engineering. Today, I am filling in for Ryan, he couldn't make it. This is his presentation, as I'm sure you recognize, he does a great job putting this information together for you. So we're going to be talking about the Silverton Road Campus Stormwater Facility upgrades. As you're familiar, our Silverton Road campus is at Silverton Road and Corden Road. Specifically, the stormwater facility is at the southwest corner of our campus, at the corner of Corden and Larden. This is a construction plan, and it's rotated so that north is pointing to the right. The details include improving the stormwater treatment and detention capacity. As you can see, this will be here. We need to make some improvements to what's already out there. There's also an oil-water separator that will be installed here next to the truck wash, so that we can continue washing our trucks and meeting our, all of our requirements that we need to set forth by the EPA and DEQ. And a big part of this, this cost of this project is properly disposing of the contaminated soils that will need to be removed here. This has been something that's needed to be fixed for a while. And then there is also, there's new storm pipe being installed. This is a, we have maintenance access here for the couple of times a year that they may need to come in and maintain the facility itself. If you have any questions about the plan, I can answer anything. Seeing none, I move ahead. We've got, we had four bids, happily all from Marion County businesses, and low bid was for Emery and Sons at $336,895. And the construction will be starting soon and hopefully completing here in the next few months. And with that, we would request an approval of the public improvement agreement for Emery and Sons.
Thank you, Lonnie. Thank you for your presentation. Any questions?
Just comments. If we're asking public and stuff to really control stormwater, we ought to be setting the example. I'm a little taken back for washing trucks. 1995, we installed a oil-water separator. I can't believe the county hasn't done it till now. What was the system?
We have, we have an oil-water separator.
This is a replacement, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was going to say.
Mm-hmm, seems a little bit late. That's my understanding, that we already have one here.
And Emery and Sons did a lot of work for just these kind of projects for me, and always did a great job, by the way. So, what isn't mine to do?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve a public improvement agreement with Emery and Sons Construction Group LLC in the amount of $336,895 for the Silverton Road Campus Stormwater Facility Upgrade Project through September 30th, 2021.
Second it?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I was trying to think how we could throw Scott Mills Bridge into this project.
No, that's good. You just, you keep working on it. One of these days.
No, there's been some slippage. I let off a little bit, and suddenly it's another year. I'm not making this up.
You've got to watch them over there in Public Works.
We'll invite you to the ribbon cutting.
We're, absolutely.
Wouldn't that be nice?
We're working on the IDA right now with ODOT.
With Mike Kane and.
Mike Kane.
Great wheelchair.
It's coming. It's making, we'll get there.
I trust.
Sorry it's not fast enough for you. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Have a great day.
You too. Thanks for all your work. Okay, next up, we got Joe Fenimore, and we're going to receive and consider the appeal of the Marion County Planning Commission's decision denying subdivision adjustment case number 20-001 Progressive Design Builders, Incorporated.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the Record, Joe Fenimore.
Good morning, Joe.
The item before you today is a request, was a request to subdivide 21,700-square-foot parcel into seven lots with an adjustment to reduce the minimum lot width standard in a multifamily zone located on Lancaster Drive Northeast in Salem. The applicant is currently constructing seven townhouse dwellings on the property, and is requesting to subdivide the property so each dwelling can be on its own lot. The CSAM code contains provisions specific to townhouse lots that allow for a minimum lot width of 20 feet. However, the current county code still requires a minimum width of 40 feet. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on June 16th, 2020, and discussed the proposed adjustment to the minimum lot width, and discovered that there are two, that the two unattached buildings are only five feet apart. There's a triplex and a fourplex that are right next to each, being built next to each other. The Marion County Code requires a 10-foot building separation in that instance, and the city code requires a 5-foot side yard setback, which is basically the same thing. The Planning Commission considered an additional adjustment to this standard to allow the buildings to be closer together, and after deliberation, determined that the adjustment criteria were not met in that case, and on a vote of 5 to 2 denied their request. In the appeal, the applicant argues that the proposed development is needed housing and should have been processed as a limited land use decision, and that only clear and objective standards can be applied to the proposed development. The appeal then argues that the adjustment criteria for reducing the setback are satisfied. The Board has the options of accepting the appeal and remanding the matter back to the Planning Commission or hearings officer, accepting the appeal and schedule a public hearing. The suggested hearing date is July 29th or later. Deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's decision denying the request. Staff recommends the Board accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing with the suggested hearing date of July 29th. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Joe?
I do. Joe, I was trying to figure this out. I was going to ask you what kind of, I thought it was just this outdoor storage shed, but you said a triplex, that's pretty substantial. But what's the thinking behind the setbacks in itself, ability to drive through, privacy, what?
I was asked that at the Planning Commission meeting, and I really don't understand the reason for that, other than maybe for fire protection. You have a 10-foot, you have a 10-foot area between buildings, so you can get in there for that particular use. Not getting too much of the details of this property, but those buildings were built with the expectation that there would be a property line there. So they are actually built to all fire code requirements. The Planning Commission just didn't feel comfortable going that extra step in this particular case.
Yeah, I wish I knew just what the issue was. If it was privacy, then you'd say, then put a fence up so you're not looking right in your neighbor's window or something, but I can't quite come up with it.
Yeah, I'd like to have a public hearing on this, because this doesn't make sense.
All right. Since you said that, I would make a motion that we do receive and consider an appeal of Marion County Planning Commission's decision having to do with the subdivision adjustment case 20001 Progressive Design Builder.
I'll second the motion.
Joe was trying to fill us.
And schedule a public hearing?
Set the date.
I'm sorry. So the motion is to accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing?
Schedule a public.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing. We have a second. We have a second. Any further discussion?
The hearing date of July 29th, 2020, right? Is that appropriate? That's what you're recommending.
Correct. Okay. You want to amend that motion then?
Yep. Yeah, but it's fine, I'm fine.
Okay. So we have a motion, an amended motion to accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing for July 29th, 2020. We have a second, is that right?
Yes.
We have a second. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Joe. That concludes our agenda today, and it is clearly my turn to read the calendar. Oh, is there one more?
Mr. Chair, yes. I know there was a little confusion down here this morning, and the chief accountant came down, and we had just received a revised copy of the grant agreement with the state of Oregon.
Okay.
There were nine additional changes added to it, but they were all changes that the Oregon County Council's Association was asking for.
Okay.
So they submitted it, and I just want you to know, we'll replace that document. You have a signature page that's separate, but I wanted to put on the record that we are submitting the revised document.
Do we need a new motion?
Sounds like we should.
I think we should.
Okay. That was on our consent agenda, right?
It was number two, yep.
Okay. Commissioner Bontano, I think that's your motion. Want to make a revised motion there?
This is the second one?
Yes. It just has technical changes in the documents.
All right, I'm going to make a motion that, that we accept adjustments to a consent item we had having to do with intergovernmental agreement with Department of Services for CARES Act reimbursement.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Motion passes. Thank you, Jan. Okay.
COVID changing by the minute.
Yeah, I can't keep up with that.
Now, I will read the calendar. Today is Wednesday, July 15th, and we just completed our board session. At 11:00 AM today, we have our BOC policy meeting located in the Commissioners Boardroom. That's the fifth floor of this building, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. Tomorrow, Thursday, July 16th, at 8:00 in the morning, we have a City of Salem Marion County meeting located at the Sassy Union at 1244 State Street in Salem. On Monday, July 20th, at 8:30 in the morning, we have Calendar Review located in the Commissioners Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building. That's 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. Again, on Monday, July 20th, at 9:00 AM, we have Management Update located in the Commissioners Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building. On Tuesday, July 21st, at 1:00 in the afternoon, we have a Marion County Housing Authority regular board meeting located in the Commissioners Boardroom, the fifth floor of this building. On Tuesday, July 21st, at 2:00 in the afternoon, we have a Mid Valley Economic Recovery Team